I'd like to call the meeting to order and if we could all stand for the flag slip.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, which stands one nation, united states, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to take note that all commissioners are here and present today. Are there going to be any agenda changes?
No.
Okay. We'll move on to public comment if anybody has anything in the audience that they would like to say that is not on the agenda today. Good morning.
Good morning. Morning to the people out there in TB land as well. You're lucky. I found new peace in my heart.
Do you want to state your name for the record, please?
No, I don't. Under the Brown Act, I don't have to.
That's fine.
I found new peace in my heart. See, I'm...I don't respect you. I have no, no respect for you. But I'm kind and I'm tolerant. And that's what you can ask for of me and that's what I'm going to give you. I want you to understand that when you make decisions up here, sometimes it affects me. Sometimes I have to get involved. That costs me time. But being a kind man, I'm willing to give my time. All right? Don't, don't think you're the end-all, the be-all, end-all. You're not. You're not that bright. Okay? So we're going to talk about something else that's going to be on the agenda later on. And I'm going to give my two cents.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to say this morning? Okay, then we will move on to, there is no consent agenda, so we're going to go straight into our public hearings this morning and we're going to start with 2018-052. Gina, would you, are you going to do that presentation for us?
As soon as I can make room here.
Okay.
Okay, so first item, just kind of a note, we've got three ag preserve contracts coming before you this year. Today, you'll consider two out of the three. I'll have the third one to you at the next planning commission hearing. So first ag preserve contract, Mr. Mark Connolly submitted an application to the, to the county ag commissioner's office to establish ag preserve contract 363. It happens to be for two contiguous parcels totaling a seven, excuse me, 176.01 acres located off of Burson Road in Burson. In addition to the consideration for the ag preserve contract establishing that property in the Williamson Act, this consideration also includes a zoning amendment. Currently, the parcels are zoned unclassified and of course, signifying the Williamson Act, the parcels will be zoned ag preserve. Currently, there is historical evidence of the land's ability to sustain viable agriculture operations. Even though the property has not previously been in the Williamson Act, there, it has been an active cattle and horse ranch for many years. The parcel meets the minimum requirements for acreage of, which is only 100 acres for the Williamson Act for this type of operation. The proposed operation consists of 58 head of cattle. They will be grazing currently on both dry and irrigated pasture. As one of the requirements for the ag commissioner's office to consider the establishment of a contract for the Williamson Act, the farm advisor, local farm advisor did a feasibility study which indicates the land is capable of meeting the gross annual income of $2,000. Your ag advisory committee as well as your agricultural commissioner both reviewed this application in detail and their recommendation is for the board of supervisors to establish the contract. And after substantial review from our department, we concur with their recommendation for approval, finding that the proposal meets the minimum requirements set forth in the zoning. In addition, is in compliance with the county general plan and therefore, we are also recommending the establishment of the contract in addition to the zoning of the property.
Okay. Do you have any questions, Gina?
Yeah, if I have the procedure right, once the board approves the zoning, assuming they do, the zoning change and, and the Williamson Act, then there, there has to be entering into the contract of the Williamson Act.
Those will happen simultaneously. So this, this whole thing will go up to the board of supervisors for consideration as a package, but indeed, they are two separate, two separate actions because the zoning has to be established through an ordinance and the approval of the establishment of the contract, as we know, is an actual resolution. But the ag preserve zoning is that signifier that the land is restricted by the Williamson Act and therefore, our recommendation is to obviously zone the parcel in addition to establish the contract.
I'm just, I'm wondering if, if when we get around to the resolution, if we should say that, recommend the board of supervisors establish agriculture preserve 363 and conditioned on the execution of a Williamson Act contract, approve the zoning amendment. I, it just, I, I, it's unclear to me when this contract is signed or whatever.
It's all done...
At the same, same meeting.
At the same time.
Same meeting.
At the same meeting.
So they wouldn't approve the zoning amendment unless the contract's been executed?
No, no. So if for some reason the contract fails and the board decides not to establish the contract, then the zoning will, will likely not follow. There would be absolutely no reason to zone the parcel ag preserve if in fact, the board does not want to establish an ag preserve.
Yeah, I just didn't know the, the order in which things happen. Okay.
Yeah, so it, it'll actually show up in two different actions. The, the establishment of the contract will show up on the agenda first and the consideration for the zoning amendment will follow directly after. The presentation will be much like it is now. They'll be pretty much discussed together, but the consideration is two separate actions.
And the contract will have been signed by the time the board of supervisors approves the zoning change?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. That's great.
Okay, any further questions?
No.
Okay, then is the applicant here today? Do you have anything you'd like to add to this?
My name's Mark Connolly. Just let you know I'm here. I'm willing to answer any questions that you have. It's an excellent report by Kevin Wright and I want to thank you and your staff for the consideration. We hope to keep this land in agricultural production in perpetuity if possible. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, it does, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Connolly?
No.
Okay. Then I will go to the public for any comments that the public may have on this agenda item.
Joyce Tekel, I live in Burson area. Phil and Hazel Kane were long-term friends of mine. We've known them since the early eighties, possibly late seventies. We'd got to the point where we would even, you know, on occasion, help them separate their cows and load them out. And I know they bought the ranch in 1953. So they've been here a long time and agriculture was really important to them. That's all I have to say. I really support this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And welcome back. Okay. Good morning.
Colleen Blatt with myvalleysprings.com and we also strongly support the agricultural preserve contract and the zoning amendment for all the reasons stated in the planning report, consistency with the general plan and the draft general plan. You know, need to rezone and preserve existing land that's been, been used for agricultural purposes since probably the fifties from what I understand. So we totally support this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Colleen. Anybody else have anything to say? Okay, seeing no more public comment, we will close public comment, bring it back to the commission for any discussion.
One other question I had, should the notice of exemption be part of the record? From, sequo, notice of exemption?
Should it be part of the record?
The, before us. I believe that it exists and everything else. I was just wondering if it...
Yeah, we're not required to file the notice of exemption, but certainly, it'll, it can be part of the physical record.
It's all, it's done usually after a decision is made.
Excuse me?
The, the notice of exemption is usually filed after the decision has been made.
I think he's referencing in the resolution that...
That it has been made and that thought, it says...
Well, it's a finding that you're making that it is exempt.
Right.
And then we will then prepare the notice and file it.
Okay.
Okay with that?
I'm fine.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Just education.
I don't have any issues with this.
Okay, me either.
Just a quick note, there were a few typos added an S to the word parcel to make it parcels plural. So just, that'll be corrected in the resolution when I bring it back for signature. It was just a very minor little thing that we missed.
Okay. And you didn't find that?
Kelly did.
Oh, you did?
He hasn't had a chance to talk about it.
It's like, wow! Frankly, I was really kind of happy that that's all he found.
That was a good one. Okay. Okay, would you like to read the recommendation, please?
Staff recommends the planning commission pass a motion to adopt resolution 2018-059 recommending the board of supervisors approve application 2018-052 for ag preserve number six three, oh, excuse me, 363 and adopt an ordinance amending the zoning of assessor parcel numbers 4802502, 034 and 050002120 from unclassified to ag preserve based on the findings included therein.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
I second.
Okay, and do we need to say amended with the S?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries five oh. Thank you. Have a great day. Okay, on to hearing number two, 2018-053 and Gina will handle that one as well.
Okay, ag preserve number two. Again, ag commissioner's office received a application to establish a ag preserve contract 362 from Stephen and Denise Siminich. The parcels are four contiguous parcels totaling 345.4 acres of land located off a fourth crossing road in San Andres. Again, this parcel has not previously been part of the Williamson Act, but it does have historical evidence demonstrating the land's ability to sustain a viable agricultural operation for the past at least 100 years. The property has been an active cattle ranch and the applicants now owning the property are continuing the same practice. So in addition to the establishment of the Williamson Act contract, this land also needs to be rezoned to signify the ag preserve zone. So the parcels are currently zoned residential agriculture and unclassified and as said before, the zoning appropriate for the Williamson Act is ag preserve. Currently, the property owners run approximately 33 head of cattle that are grazing on dry pasture land. The parcels meet the minimum requirement of 100 acres to qualify for the Williamson Act. Additionally, the farm advisor's feasibility study also indicates the capability of the land being able to meet the $2,000 requirement to be in the Williamson Act. In addition, the ag advisory committee and your agricultural commissioner reviewed this application in detail and their recommendation to the board is to establish the ag preserve contract. Again, we also did our thorough review and found that the request for both the contract, establishment of the contract and the zoning are both consistent with the county general plan and we are, we concur with the ag commissioner and the ag committee's recommendation to approve the zoning and establish the contract.
Okay, thank you. Questions? No? Okay. Is the applicant here? Would you like to come up and have anything to say? No? Okay. So then if nobody has any, does anybody have any questions? No? Okay. Then I would like to take it to public comment. Anybody in the public had anything to say on this item?
Just ditto what we said before. We support the preservation of agriculture in the county as per the general plan and we support this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. No more public comment. I'll close public comment, bring them back to the commissioners and it apparently, nobody has any comments, so I'm going to take it back to Gina to read the resolution, please, or recommendation.
Staff recommends the planning commission pass a motion to adopt resolution 2018-058 recommending the board of supervisors approve application 2018-053 for agriculture preserve number 362 and adopt an ordinance amending the zoning of APNs 052003026 from residential agriculture 10 acre minimum height limitation and assessor parcel number 052-003-010 and 023 from residential agriculture minimum five acre density with a height limitation and assessor parcel number 052003024 from unclassified to agriculture preserve based on the findings included therein.
There were a couple typos in this one, too.
Yes. Same typo is found in the Connolly resolution, added an S to the word parcels. And the other one was, refresh my memory, Kelly, where did we find the other one?
Same page, paragraph two, under evidence, third line. Where it says, "The purpose of the AP zone is to protect and preserve lands for INT 43."
Yes. Forty-three is, is a code that we have to enter to print. And when you're on the wrong screen, I find that I keep inserting the, the numbers forty-three into documents that should, so before I printed, apparently, I did this and Kelly caught it. So I fixed it and it'll be, the corrected version will come back to you for signature.
And then the S is added to parcels in two places in, on, under three?
Uh, did we do that again? Under three?
Under three, the second...
Under the evidence?
Yeah, evidence, parcels in the immediate vicinity of the subject, parcels.
I will make that correction as well.
And then in the second where ants clause. About, right about the middle where it says for 45.88 acres. It needs to just be a comma after the word acres and the word are needs to be eliminated. You've got two verbs in that thing.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay? All right. Can I get a motion as amended?
So moved.
Second?
No, second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Five oh? Okay, thank you. And then we are going to move on to item number three, 2018-040. And Gina, are you presenting that one also?
Yes, indeed.
All right. Did everyone see her? Do we need to turn the lights out? So the next item for your consideration is a plan development permit for Paul and Deborah Bertini. The subject parcels happen to currently be two separate parcels and we'll get into the merger of those a little bit later on, but currently, the addressed parcels are 18 and 38 Avery Sheep Ranch Road in Avery. They are located pretty much on the corner of Highway four in Avery Sheep Ranch Road. The project description includes the construction of a 2,400 square foot garage. The subject parcel is an unimproved parcel, just less than approximately a half an acre. As said before, there is a proposal to merge two parcels. The current, currently, the property owner owns two contiguous parcels. One parcel is developed with the, with a business office. He is a licensed contractor and he runs his, his business from the current building on the adjacent lot and they have submitted a lot line adjustment application to merge the two parcels because in, in everyone's mind, the proposed garage is accessory to the other building because they're going to be used for the same purposes, the same business. So both parcels are zoned CPPD, which is a professional office zone, based zone district. The plan development is the combining zone, which is the reason why we're here today. The parcels are located in what has been identified as the commercial corridor for the Avery Hathaway Pines Community Plan. Here's an aerial photo of the parcels. The green squiggly line kind of indicates the merger between those two parcels. So again, the parcel there on the, on the corner of Highway four and Sheep Ranch Road is the current development, which is the, is the property owner's building that they operate, or I should say, run the construction business from. The adjacent lot is the proposed site for the garage. So in addition to performance standards and requirements, you know, that we, we address through the plan development permit, we have to find consistency in this particular case with the Avery Hathaway Pines Community Plan. So there are some additional goals and implementation measures set forth through the, through the community plan that, that kind of wants to help direct the commercial development in the community to ensure consistency and compatibility with the character of the community. So the Avery Hathaway Pines Community Plan encourages small moderately sized buildings. It also encourages the design of parking lots with minimal visual impacts. Also encourages the use of natural building materials in addition to the selection of exterior colors that would blend well with the, with nature. Reducing the visual impacts with landscaping is a goal by retaining natural vegetation. Specifically, the community plan discourages the removal of trees with a 12 inch diameter or larger. And it also includes, it also requires or encourages you to use that natural landscaping in your overall calculation for the landscape requirement that's set forth in the code. For the plan development code, there's actually a 10% landscaping opposed to the normal 5% that you would see in any of your base zones. So we will get into landscaping a little bit further, but again, the community plan encourages you to use and incorporate that natural vegetation, specifically those trees, into your landscape plans. So we found that the proposed project is consistent with the goals and policies set forth in the community plan. In fact, the building that is proposed is a moderately sized building of only 2,400 square feet. The building and parking is screened from view of the highway. It is rather difficult to screen the entire development from Avery Sheep Ranch Road because you do have to have an encroachment onto the parcel, but virtually, the entire parcel is screened from view from adjacent parcels by way of the natural landscaping and trees that currently exist on the property. The parcel, or the, the building is proposed to be constructed of natural materials. It will be a single-story building of, well, actually, I should have addressed this when I was talking about the height. It's a 40 by 60 building. Again, it's a relatively moderately sized building, reaching only about 20 feet high. But the wood frame building will be paneled, will have wood panel siding, composition roof and it will be painted beige color with a brown trim. And that is to mimic the current building or the existing building on the adjacent parcel that will be merged ultimately with the subject parcel. I apologize, the building elevations don't show up real good on here. I tried to get them darker, but you do have a full-size plan in front of you. So that'll give you kind of an idea of what the building is proposed to look like. These are photos of the existing office building that the Bertinis currently run their construction business out of and you can see the, the color choices and again, those will be mimicked on the new building in addition to the siding. I'm just touching a little bit more on the landscape requirements. As said before, the plan development combining zone requires additional landscaping of 10% opposed to the normal 5% that you'll see for commercial development in the base zones. The community plan...
Could you explain that a little bit more, the 10%?
Oh, sure. So each base zone has performance standards that are required. One of those performance standards in your base zone generally is 5% landscaping and the landscaping is, you're, you are required to plant 5% new landscaping for all the structure and, and property impacted by parking.
But 5% of what?
5% of the land has to be, that is devoted to structures and parking, has to be planted in new landscaping. So for purposes of the plan development permit, there's a little bit stricter requirement in that we're requiring, the code requires 10% rather than the 5%. So again, the community plan encourages the retention of all trees 12 inches in diameter or larger, which in this proposal, the, the owners are not proposing to remove any trees at all from the property. So all that you see there will be retained. Designing, they have designed the project with the maximum vegetation coverage. If you can notice the picture, the trees are very mature trees and again, you cannot see the parcel, the interior of the parcel, the development from the adjacent parcels at all. And the encouragement for the community plan encourages you to incorporate that natural landscaping into their landscape plan. Here is a, another view of the mature trees seen from Sheep Ranch Road. Here is a view from the encroachment where the proposed parking will be. In addition, there is the same view from Sheep Ranch Road, the location of the building. So you can see all the trees in the background. In addition, there is existing landscaping that was, that was planted with the development of the existing building. Here is a, just a quick view of the site plan, which again, you have a full-size copy for convenience in your packet. So planning feels that the landscape requirement has already been satisfied. The total landscaping requirement for the existing and the new development is 1,010 square feet. Total landscaping for the existing development currently exists is 600 square feet and the total natural vegetation existing on-site is 15,000 square feet. So if you combine the existing landscaping and the natural vegetation on-site, they far exceed the minimum requirement for all landscaping on the parcel. And therefore, our recommendation is to not require any further landscaping because they have far exceeded the requirement that is set forth in code. The Avery Commercial Corridor, we went around and, and had to, I went around and looked at other development... We went around and had to, I went around and looked at other development, commercial development in the area to determine kind of just basically what was out there already. What I have kind of determined is that the community itself appears to be developed over a matter of time. I'm assuming the majority of the development is probably established prior to the adoption of the community plan. But I found that the buildings in the area varied in materials, colors, and even architectural styles. So just some pictures of the development in the area. This is a building that is, I believe, either adjacent or just down the road from the proposed development. As you can see, well, this particular building has kind of boarded up, but there's very little landscaping involved. We've got what appears to be a composition roof with some wood siding, pretty basic stuff, gray paint. This is a picture of the historic Avery Hotel. Again, this is where things kind of get a little sideways in the community. We've got the Avery Mini Storage. It's a fairly large scale building. It is made, constructed of metal. The colors seem to be compliant or consistent with the community plan. But again, I'm assuming that the majority of this development was prior to the adoption of the community plan. There's another building located in the commercial corridor, the Avery Tire and Automotive Building. Moderately sized building, but again, made of, constructed of metal. Color selection would probably be consistent with the community planned goals. This is a little church off of Highway four. Seems to probably be the most compatible building in the area. And again, a couple more businesses located off of Highway four. So as you can see, there's varying color selections, varying architectural styles, varying materials. But nevertheless, we feel that the Bertini Building, as proposed, is consistent with the community plan and its goals and implementation measures to further maintain the mountainous kind of character that the community has. So we did find that this project was exempt from CEQA. Section 15303, this is a relatively small structure, less than the requirement in CEQA under subsection C. Small structures not exceeding 2,500 square feet. This indeed is a 2,400 square foot building. And it is an accessory structure. And specifically, garages and carports are called out in that exemption under E. So in conclusion, the community plan goals and policies have been met. We feel that this parcel or this proposed development is meeting all those goals with the moderately sized building. We feel that they have designed the building with consideration of the rural character of the community in use of natural materials, natural color selection that would blend well with the surrounding vegetation. In addition to the retention of the natural vegetation, the landscape requirements have more than been satisfied with the existing landscaping and the natural vegetation. And proposed, the building and the parking are naturally screened from view from the highway and adjacent parcels via the natural landscaping that will not be, or that will be retained. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, any questions?
No.
I do have a question about the landscaping. I mean, I think there's certainly enough landscaping on the property. But I'm concerned about legal requirements for the landscaping. As I understand it, the 10% requirement is 10%, you have to add new landscaping equal to 10% of the gross disturbed land area in the new project. Is this, does this building, will the construction of this building constitute gross disturbed land area, since it seems to be on a flat?
Well, I mean, there won't be any grading proposed. There's no grading proposed for it. But it will, in fact, I guess, be technically disturbed because they are building a building and they are putting in parking.
So how do we get around the, or how do we satisfy the 10% new landscaping when you have this new construction?
Yeah, so the purpose of landscaping is to add visual improvements, if you will, to the parcel to kind of better the appearance of the commercial development. In this particular case, it is further regulated through the Avery Hathaway Pines Community Plan. And the Avery Hathaway Pines Community Plan, unlike any other community plan that I've had the opportunity to read, this community plan specifically says that they want you to retain those trees, retain that vegetation, and include that in the overall total of all the landscaping on the parcel.
That's in the?
Yes. That is specifically written in the community plan, yes. So in this case, there's really no warrant for additional landscaping. You know, what else are we possibly going to screen?
It's just whether we're satisfying the ordinance, that's all.
We feel that we are.
Because of the community plan's statement that, let's take all this together?
Right.
So in cases where you have a community plan that states that you can look at the entire natural or pre-existing vegetation as satisfying the requirements of the statute, of the ordinance, we can go with that, is what you're saying.
We feel so, yes.
That community plan is pretty specific.
Well, I know, it's just how it interacts with an ordinance requirement.
Yeah, one of the things that that community plan stresses is to keep the natural environment. And we've had this conversation before where I say, you're making people put in flowers and things that aren't even native to the area, and it doesn't flow. By keeping the trees and the existing landscape that's there, it's more natural and flowing. And that was a big deal for the Avery community plan. It's pointed out pretty heavily in there.
I don't see a copy of our ordinance or the plan statements in here, but I miss it.
No, it's not in there.
I didn't incorporate.
I don't understand which one has precedent. Does the ordinance override the community plan, vice versa? I agree.
I don't know that there's necessarily.
This whole thing sounds like an excellent idea, right? But I have this ordinance thing, whatever it says is out there. What do we do about it? Or why do we do?
Well, according to the staff report, the Board of Supervisors adopted a general plan amendment mending the community plan for Avery and Sheep Ranch, or Avery and Hathaway Pines. So what you have is two separate enactments by the board, which should be read together. And I think that's what the planning department is saying. You have to take them together, and the community plan being more specific on this ought to be given credence, if you will, followed when you're interpreting the planned development.
So we're going to be setting precedent? Is that correct?
I don't think we're necessarily setting precedent. You know, every project is unique in its location, in its site criteria. If it were a location that did not have native landscaping, clearly, we would be requiring new landscaping to be put in. But I would agree with Commissioner Booster that we have to look at both aspects, the zoning code and the general plan policies. Typically, the zoning code is more specific, but in this case, I think that we, we feel confident that the intent of the code is met by incorporating the existing native vegetation into landscaping, lowercase L landscaping, to meet the intent of both the code and the general plan.
I would think that we would want to put in a whereas, that whereas the Avery community plan, as approved by the Board of Supervisors, provides that, as you stated.
We can do that, yeah.
And if you do that, why then, it makes it clear that we're looking at that, not in another situation where somebody's going to come in and say, hey, I've got natural vegetation.
Right, because the PD combining zone exists because the Avery community plan wants it to. So it says, you know, all these parcels, I want you to have this PD combining zone so we can ensure consistency in the community and compatibility with our plan. So if it wasn't for the community plan, you would likely not see a PD combining zone on this parcel at all.
Different subject. I see that this wood siding is specified on this thing. Is that, are we still allowing wood siding in this fire hazard area?
That would be up to the building department. I'm assuming so. I don't believe, I don't believe that a building permit has been submitted yet, but perhaps maybe the applicant's agent could probably touch on that. I'm sure he's a lot more knowledgeable about construction and building code requirements than I. Keeping in mind, we haven't given them an opportunity to speak yet, yeah.
All right, if there's no further questions, I'm going to go ahead and bring the applicant up to speak and his representative. Would you like to come up?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Council and planning staff. Ray Waller, I'm an agent for the owners of Paul and Niffy Bertini. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. But first, let me say, we appreciate the efforts of Gina Cathon. I'm working with this through this process. And so I will address the wood siding issue. In the wildland urban interface areas, you have to have an exterior siding that is non-cobustible, fire resistant. The state fire marshal has a list of products that are approved. And there are certain types of wood sidings that is approved. Louisiana Pacific makes a smart panel, looks like T111 that you see everywhere, and that is approved. So if he chooses to do that, the building department will approve it. Or he could choose a cement siding that looks like wood. So there are alternatives, but that's what we're proposing.
Okay?
Yeah, sure.
Do you have anything further you want to add?
No, any other questions?
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to bring, open it up for the public to come up and comment, please.
Good morning again, calling Platt with MyValleySprings.com. I wanted to compliment the planning department for doing a good job of making sure this was consistent with the Avery Hathaway Pines Community Plan. And we support the community plan's policies and implementation measures to be complied with in these applications. And I was going to ask a question, but it's pretty much been asked by Tim and others about the conflict between the county code and the community plan landscape requirements. But as Gina put in her staff report, the community said, the community plan requires that the existing vegetation shall be calculated into those requirements for new landscaping, was my interpretation of that. So to me, that explained that there wasn't really a conflict, that that was to be calculated into those new requirements. So we support this, and we support the project and the community plan, and hope that the community plan can be retained somehow in the general plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so is there any further public comment? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the Commissioners for discussion.
Manetera, I have some suggested language that might apply to the landscaping issue. So it was recommended by Commissioner Ladish add a whereas. Whereas the site is located within the Avery Hathaway Pines Community Plan area. And then, under the findings three, I would add the following to the evidence. The Avery Hathaway Pines Community Plan contains specific provisions to incorporate native vegetation into landscaping. The native vegetation provides adequate screening of the proposed structure. I think that might help.
Okay, thank you.
Resolve that potential conflict.
Did you write that down?
I've written down.
Oh, good.
Is that item number four?
That would just be, add that to the evidence statement under three.
Under the evidence, we go 235?
Oh, you can fix that, too.
Whoops.
Oh, Kelly, you missed one.
He was going to call it, I'm sure.
So you want me to add?
You wanted to put a four in there.
You want me to add that to three?
Three?
Yeah.
Because it's kind of consistent with the evidence.
Because the statement is consistent with the county code, is how we're explaining that.
Do you have the combing, it should be combining, in the middle of three? And I think for clarity, we're going to get down to commas here. The last sentence as presented to us of number three, the existing landscaping, comma, including natural vegetation, comma, exceeds the required 10% landscaping, comma. So two additional commas.
Including natural landscaping, comma, and, I'm sorry, what was the second?
The first comma is after the first word, the first use of landscaping. And the second comma would be after the second use of the word landscaping. And then there's one period under the general conditions that you probably already have. One dash one, just doesn't have a period.
Did you ask me on that one?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay.
There were two others.
Batted cleanup, shortstop.
We found combing instead of combining. And what was the other one, Kelly?
On page one, evidence under number one, third line, words talks about new construction or conversation of small.
I kind of like small structures getting together and having.
If there are no other discussions, I just, being that this is in my district, I will say that I don't see this as posing any issues whatsoever. It's one of the nicer, cleaner buildings in that community. Those buildings are pretty old, there is no consistency. The planned development hasn't brought no consistency. The only thing this is doing is making him take extra steps to be even better than the rest. So I don't have any objections whatsoever to this project.
And for once, the planned development is actually added to this.
I'll be glad when it's gone, thank you.
I understand that, but we got, we're not.
I'm not a planned development fan.
I understand that.
Yeah, so let's not even go there right this second. Okay?
The only thought that occurred to me is, why do we need nine parking spaces for?
I thought about that, too, but then I realized square footage of the building is causing that.
Right.
Yeah. He has the space, he doesn't have to cut down any trees.
Yes, as long as he's willing to do it.
Lot more paint. Okay, so if there's any, no other further discussions? Commissioner Bocelli, you've got, no? Okay, then I would like to ask for the recommendation, please.
Staff recommends a planning commission approved resolution 2018-044 approving 2018-040 planned development, approving the design of a 2,400 square foot garage in the commercial district of Avery, based upon the findings included therein.
Thank you.
As amended?
As amended.
Oh, as amended.
Can I motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
That was Tim on the second.
Thank you. Okay, let's take a...
Okay, let's take a, you want to take a 10-minute break?
I'd invite you guys to Avery and take a great look at our beautiful building.
We're going to come for the grand opening and all the desserts.
Well, that's nine parking places.
Just kidding, I don't touch that. Okay, are we ready?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we'll bring the meeting back to order, and we will start with item number four, which is two zero one seven, and we get the pleasure of having our director, Mr. Maurer, to present.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is the first step in a two-step process to look at eliminating the, the plan development overlay or combining zone in the McColomy Hill area. The purpose of this ordinance amendment is to establish a means to enact the, or, I guess enact the, the design guidelines that were adopted by the Board of Supervisors in 2013, I believe. So there are specific design guidelines that apply to property in McColomy Hill. Right now, those are applied when a plan development application comes through, and there's been discussion over the years about, you know, removing that. But if we just removed it, then there would be no mechanism in which to apply those design guidelines. And so I'm proposing that we establish a design review ordinance. And this would not just apply in McColomy Hill, although McColomy Hill is the only place where it's being proposed at this time, but it's a countywide ordinance. And so that if other communities wanted to establish design guidelines, this would be a tool in which to have those apply to certain types of development. And it really depends on what another community would like to do, and whether to establish design guidelines or not, and then do they apply to just commercial? Are they historic? Are they, you know, modest? This could be, be applied in a broad means, and that's why the language is not specific to McColomy Hill, but would be, you know, apply countywide, depending on which communities, if any, desire to have design standards met. One clarification in the staff report, and I talk about down at the bottom of the first page, the process that we go through right now with plan development would be pretty much the same, except that it's a staff-level review rather than coming to the Planning Commission. The intent here is that it sort of simplifies the process. And I talk about the project being categorically exempt. And I guess, you know, when we're in the business and we use terms all the time, we sort of assume that everyone else knows what that means, but that wasn't, that wasn't to intend that these would be exempt from the designer view or the design guidelines, categorically exempt from SEQA is what that meant, what I had meant to say there. So just to clarify, that as we've identified, even this past project that we just discussed, that was exempt because of the size of the building. There are numerous exemptions under SEQA. So unless we're actually looking at a fairly large project, excuse me, on, you know, a green site where there's, you know, no existing development, most of these projects are probably going to end up being exempt from SEQA anyway. And so I just wanted to let, you know, make it clear that we weren't exempting these projects from the designer view process, but they're exempt from SEQA. So the, getting into the ordinance itself, tried to keep it as, you know, as simple as possible, really, that we would, you know, the purpose of the ordinance is to, you know, establish a process and to have, you know, where, where standards are adopted and apply them as desired by the community and is approved by the Board of Supervisors. So if a community would get together, as the citizens of McColomy Hill have, we want to retain a certain architectural style for our community and for McColomy Hill, it's an historic character because it's a historic community, and there's a lot of great examples of old historic structures in town that we want to maintain as well as, as build off of. So new construction going would, would retain that same kind of historical style or changes of the building. And that's important to the citizens of McColomy Hill. That it would only apply where a design review combining zone has been added to parcels, you know, through the zoning ordinance amendment by the Board of Supervisors. And it establishes a review process where if there is a designer view committee, you know, appointed committee by the board, that they would have a review process, where they would provide recommendations to the director. The director would then be able to approve the project with obvious appeal rights to the Planning Commission, ultimately the board if necessary. We have exempted certain things, and I know Commissioner Ladish, you brought up some questions the other day, which we'll, we'll need to discuss. Exemptions are, you know, changes to signs, painting and landscaping, and typically, single-family dwellings would be not applied unless they are specifically imposed as a part of the, or included as part of the design standards. Now, the issue has been brought up, well, the design standards for McColomy Hill include colors and landscape requirements. The difficulty that we have is that there's no permit required for someone to paint their home. There's no permit required for someone to install landscaping. So we don't really have any review process that would, unless we want someone to file a designer view application to, to paint their house or to install landscaping. I don't think that's what the county wants to do, but we sort of have a little conflict here with the design guidelines specifically identify color and what would prevent someone from getting an approved color through the design guidelines and the initial review process, and coming back here later and painting it, you know, chartreuse or something. So I'm not really sure how to resolve that, other than I would think that once someone has painted a structure, it's approved, they're not going to spend thousands of dollars repainting I guess that really sort of ends my presentation on the ordinance. I'm, hopefully, you know, had a chance to read it and, you know, reviewed it and considered, you know, the process, and does it make sense? I guess I'm here to answer any questions you might have, and then we can open up to the public.
Okay. Want to start?
Well, I, I think I'm going to hold off until we hear from the proponents and the public.
Okay.
As far as the painting and the landscaping, I do have questions.
This isn't the McColomy ordinance, this is the countywide one.
Yeah.
The McColomy ordinance is next. I mean, they can still speak, but they won't be speaking to, directly to the ordinance on their.
Well, I think they're interlinked, and that's, you know.
I do, too.
And so if.
I will have questions, but I want to see.
But their presentation would be in the second ordinance, correct? They will just do public comment on the first one?
Right, because, because really, the, once we establish that this is, these are the rules, this is what the design review process is, the next step is really, okay, now we're going to apply them, and which parcel do we apply them to?
Okay.
So this is, I think, they're, they're interconnected, but they're separate actions.
Okay.
And they're, you know, the, now would be the time to say, okay, how, since we have a good example of design guidelines, how would they apply in this case? You know, under the ordinance, how would they apply? And so it would be a good way to discuss the ordinance itself without getting into the specific parcels, which is the next applicant, the next project on the agenda.
The only question I have at this time is, the, the McColomy Hill Design Review Standards is the only set of standards that has been adopted by the Board of Supervisors at this point?
That's correct.
So we don't have problems with some other plan development community having, thank you.
Does anybody else have any other questions?
On this, the exclusion, the copy on the existing signs, the painting and the landscaping are not included. If the local area, Moke Hill, or I'd say Valley Springs, or whatever, does in fact limit the painting colors or whatever, how does that play out with, with this ordinance, 1752? Does that mean then the local people cannot limit the painting color schemes or the landscaping or the copy on existing signs? Does that preclude that? Painting seems to be a particularly interesting one. I've seen two situations in the last year or so, one down in Lodi, if anybody's driven down Kettleman, and the children's dentistry building is garish, extreme purple and yellows, very, very controversial, to say the least.
You know, and maybe the best thing, let me think about this a little bit, is to provide some type of caveat, as we have with the single-family dwellings, and the more I read it, the more I'm not sure that's really the best language, where if there are, if the community desires that those to be included, that they can be, but typically, it's not. Because we have the language on, under, on the next page, C, single-family dwellings, to the extent they are exempted under applicable design standards. And the, the point there was that if the design standards apply to single-family dwellings as they do in McColomy Hill, then it's subject to the design review process.
I guess what I'm wondering is, do we even want to say, Part B especially, the exterior chain, and maybe A as well, that that would be covered by the local design review standards one way or the other, either yes or no? Why do, why does the ordinance, the county ordinance have to say anything about it?
You know, I was reaching that point until I thought, well, if, if, we don't want to get ridiculous and say, oh, if you want to repaint it the same color, you've got to apply to the Planning Department or the design review.
Well, as I think Director pointed out, we're really not talking about repainting a house. We're talking about a new construction or remodeling that needs a building permit or something like that, right?
Well, if you're repainting it garish purple, you apparently don't need a permit.
In McColomy Hill, they've held several meetings.
McColomy.
What did I say?
McColomy. You're pronouncing it phonetically.
You don't need to correct me.
It's my district. I'm sensitive about it. Whatever you do in Avery is something else.
I have wanted to hit him so many times, but I know I would go to jail.
And I'm so close.
And you are so close. Okay, so I'm not going to say that anymore. You know that hill over there in D-2? They, they have, they have a design review committee that community has met, they've agreed on this, they've met more than once, they've met multiple times as a community, not as an individual. They put their, their designs together that they want to see, that the community has agreed to work within. That is an overlay that gets recorded on each parcel that is participating in this. It's going to be hard for them to go outside of that. They can, obviously, paints just a brush on the weekend, and nobody's paying attention, and Monday morning, it's done. But I think that the process that they've gone to and the input they've received from their community is so huge and so respected there that I don't know that we need to wordsmith the work that they've already done as a county ordinance. This is going to apply to all people into the future. But then they have a second set of guidelines that they've all agreed to follow, so I don't know that this one is going to mess up the other one. I think that they're going to work in conjunction together, that's just my feeling, but I think that we could probably hear from them, and they could decide if they want that in there or out of there. But being that this is the countywide one, and.
What I'm concerned about is if you have a statement that the chapter will not apply to painting, period, why that seems.
Why should it? Do we want to have people have to pay for a permit to paint their building? I mean, we're getting.
No, that's not what we're talking about.
But that's what you would have to do.
But what you're, you're.
That's what you would have to do, Tim.
What you're discussing is respect for what the community has done.
Absolutely.
And the community wants to regulate colors. Colors come from painting, usually, and if we say, painting is not covered by this ordinance, then somebody in Moke Hill, notice that they used the contraction, can do, can say, well, painting is no longer covered, and so I'm just going to go ahead and repaint it a garish purple.
So does Phase Two of the ordinances that we're looking at for them, does that specifically state that in the countywide ordinances, they will have purview over the paint colors in their design review committee?
Phase Two is only looking at map changes.
And in this one, going back to what Tim is saying, out of respect for their design review committee, if we wanted to say that their design review guidelines would overrule this particular piece? I mean, we don't even have a fee for somebody to apply to change the paint colors.
That's what I would be suggesting, you know, subject to the comments that we're about to hear.
Yeah, I think we probably need to go there. They may be able to clarify all of it, and we're wasting time here. So is, does anybody have any other comments, or do you want to hear from the public?
I want to hear from the public.
Okay. We're going to open it up for public comment. You have to speak clearly, so I understand.
Not too fast, right? I'm Terry Weatherby, the only structural engineer with an office in four counties and the self-proclaimed mayor of Moke Hill. And I say that in jest, because if you ever have a question about Moke Hill, give me a call, because I can usually point you in the right direction. I moved here in 1989. I'm a structural engineer. I've worked on, I don't know, 60, 80, 100 projects in Moke Hill, not counting all of your guys' districts, too. I, I run into this PD all the time. It's to put an addition on your house. You, you saw what you did earlier to put a garage on a lot next door. You guys had to spend, you know, 15, 20 minutes to talk about it. PD is a horrendously bad thing. I can't tell you how many projects it's killed because of, well, the thing that we run into all the time is, there used to be, and there was, and Peter has worked with us to reduce that, but it was a $3,500 fee, just because the PD's on the property. So you're adding something on your house, and you have to pay the $3,500 for staff to do research and for you guys to meet and everything, just to add something onto your house. So 15 years ago, when we started doing the master plan, or the county general plan to revise that, the first thing that I want to do is get rid of PD. Well, Moke Hill, we've had the design review committee for many years. We found out around 2008, Julia can come up and fill you in a little more on that, and found out it wasn't sanctioned by the board. So we wrote, we were committed by the board and appointed to write the design review guidelines. We met, we had public meetings, we came up with the design review guidelines that have been adopted, and that have been working through the Planning Department on our projects in Moke Hill. And it's been part of the PD process, where Peter and the staff and the planner before him was working with us. I can give you a project example. The church needed a ADA elevator or a lift in downtown Moke Hill, and I think you guys looked at it last year, and it, it had to go through the PD process, they had to pay the 3,500. The design review guidelines had had to go through all of that, and for something that was so simple, just, just to put right in the front entrance of a church. Of course, the church was, Tim, you know, from 1852, so I guess that was a little more important. But the design review guidelines are incorporated as part of the PD process with the Planning Department looking at it. We have a committee that, that Julia will talk about, that is voluntary through the historical trust. It's not sanctioned, it's not, it hasn't been appointed by the board, it's just voluntary community members. And so that's, that's, we, when someone asks about it, we will be happy to meet with them and talk to them, and write a letter of recommendation that helps planning, but it's not the mandated thing that the Planning Department is. So, so anyways, the PD is a huge bad thing. I hate it. I'm right there with you, Lisa, I've been fighting it for 25 years. The design review guidelines are fine, that's what we've agreed to. So I really urge you to, to go along with this, to get rid of the PD. It goes to design review, which they're already doing, they've been working on for many years, and we have the guidelines in place to do that. So, anyway, do you guys have any questions? So anyway, do you guys have any questions?
Yeah. What we were just talking about, have you had a chance to read this proposed ordinance, 1752?
I have not.
Julia has.
Okay, there's, there's some exemptions stated. And the one that jumps out at me says, "requirements of this chapter", this is the overall county ordinance.
Right, and that's what we're talking about right now.
Designer view process. It says, "requirements shall, shall not apply to changes to copy on existing signs." Number two, painting shall not apply to painting. And three is landscaping and what's for it.
I think that that makes complete sense, yeah.
If I read that right, it sounds like the county's ordinance is going to say, "The designer review process cannot control painting color." So if your Moke Hill plan, AKA designer review committee, says it can't be purple, this ordinance sounds like it would override that. So I
So I, I kind of agree with Peter. There's no mechanism in there. You don't have to get a permit to paint your house.
That's not what we're talking about. It's, it's for, when you do need a permit.
Right.
Either a new build or remodel or whatever, in that process, I would assume the Moke Hill group would like to control
Control the paint color.
The color of that house or that building.
That's part of our design review guidelines, correct. So maybe the language countywide can say, "No painting" unless the designer review guidelines are, are different.
But you got to remember, this is countywide. Your, your design review is specific to your area. And I would be very cautious about anything you do to a countywide ordinance that it could impact the entire county. Your area has adopted and decided the direction they want to go in. I am totally respectful of that. Other areas have not. And any decision that's made on a countywide ordinance will affect this entire county. And not all areas are historical and they are different.
Exactly.
And so I don't want anything in a county ordinance that is going to impact other areas. Your ordinance, specific to McCallumey, say it.
Moke Hill.
Moke Hill, is, and I apologize for saying that wrong and no disrespect. Yours is specific to your area and you have a design review committee and you have a purpose of a historical town. Let me give you an example of why yours is important to me in here with the way that it's written. But in Avery, you just looked at mucky muck. I mean, you're talking 10 buildings with no cohesiveness, no, all built in a different era, different bright blue paints. I mean, all of that is, there's no way to PD that and bring some consistency to that. So going forward, yeah, but you guys have a whole different set of rules in your area that I think this is not, I don't want to see it in a county that's going to impact unholy, holy.
Oh my.
Keep going.
Okay, but I, I think your problem is solved by the fact that the applicability of this ordinance.
Some of her problems are solved.
Yeah, not those. The applicability, it only applies to specific areas of the county for which design review standards have been adopted. So we're not dictating to the rest of the county, painting and everything else. It's, this ordinance only applies to areas where the design review standards have been approved by the board of supervisors. So we just have to deal with, right now, this is the only situation, the only design review standard.
In the county ordinance, it references Arnold, Hathaway, Avery, Murphy's.
Not, not in this ordinance that we're talking about today.
It does. We're talking about all of these items here. It does reference it. And when you're talking county
I'm talking about the, the actual ordinance itself.
You've gone to a different, the second agenda item, or are you back on the countywide?
No, no, this, the countywide ordinance shall only apply to specific areas of the county for which design review standards have been adopted.
And if you put specific language in here, in order to adopt it, you have to abide by it. That's my point. So if I want to do my design review, but you have specified the language in this ordinance countywide, I don't have a choice anymore. I have to abide by a countywide ordinance.
Well, that's my problem with saying, "Painting is exempted."
Um, Madam Chair.
We could, we could change the language on that, that, that that would defer to the design review specific to that, that.
Yeah, that's exactly what we should do.
I can live with that, but I'm not, but I don't, okay.
Madam Chair, the other person, I'm going to have her come up. Julia is going to, I think she can answer that.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Julia Costello, McCallumey Hill. I'm with the History Society. I'm an archaeologist into historic preservation. So this is my hometown. Terry's the mayor because the dog died recently. Who was the mayor? I'm just saying, okay. So I thank you all for considering this. We're pioneering new ground here with the design review guidelines. And Moke Hill has made it work as well as we can with the planning department. And I think they listen to our advice and a lot of the projects come to us and we tweak windows or railings or front things and everybody's happy. And I think it's, we provide a helpful service. We're not looking to be heavy-handed or impediments. So down to the exemption part here, I agree that we should make this as generic as possible and not inhibit any other community. And so I think by adding, as you all came to, these items, if you want, painting, landscaping, single-family dwellings, with the caveat, "To the extent they are exempted under applicable design standards." But if you don't add that caveat, you're restricting every other community in the county from including them. So to retain the most flexibility, or I don't know if Peter liked the wording, I think he may suggest, but, but something to say that they're exempted unless the local designer review guidelines address them.
I agree.
And you've been caught up on
That's really good language. We ought to remember.
I know it's his language. He may, I thought he reconsidered. And so, painting is always somehow the, I don't know. That's the knee-jerk thing that everybody says. You can't tell me how to paint my house. And so I want to give you our landscaping clause in our designer review guidelines. And these are online. Anybody can have a copy. We give them to, they're on our Moke Hill website and they're on the planning department's website, that the design review guidelines apply to modification or removal of major landscape features. Landscaping modifications must take into consideration historic features and plantings. This can include old immature trees, retaining walls, sidewalks, old stone walls, driveway construction, structures in the front yards. So these are the kinds of thinking. We have a lot of old stone walls around our buildings. And so a new project that suddenly says, "We're going to widen the driveway and take out that old wall," we just want people to think about that. And so if it says that they're not to be considered, then the design review committee would have a hard time commenting on that on a project if they'd say, "Well, you're not allowed to address that." So anyway, I think if, you know, painting and landscaping in houses, if you want to say they're exempt except under applicable design standards, then that's fine. They would never come in on their own if somebody only wanted to paint a house. It would never come to the design review committee because it wouldn't go to the planning department. The design review committee, so far, we have only gotten projects through the planning department. So if your project doesn't qualify, if your landscaping, you know, doesn't qualify for a permit from the planning department, then the design review committee is not going to have anything to say about it, the way that stands.
So are you just asking people to respect the design review guidelines that you've written? How are you going to address that?
Well, pretty much, we, we ask them to respect it. But right now, the design review is part of the PD process. And they have to go through the PD process. So the county has to be, has the legal responsibility for implementing the design review guidelines. Now, in a lot of counties, you have an architectural historian, you have a historian, you have a landscape architectural historian, you have someone who can comment all this. So our county is kind of tasked with a job that they didn't apply for. They didn't say that they were historians. So they have asked the opinion of the design review committee from Moke Hill to give them an opinion. And we have local people who are interested in this and pay attention. And we look at the project, talk to the applicants, make some tweaks, make an opinion on the project. And generally, everything we've talked to people about in their development, they have done. These aren't major things. And then we give our opinion to the planning department. They can look at it and say, "We don't agree." But so far, that hasn't happened. So far, they have said, "We agree, these are reasonable." The applicant had said, "We agree, we want to be a good part of the community and these are good ideas." And so far, we haven't had any conflict. So when the PD's gone, they will only have the planning department, which is tasked with implementing the designer review guidelines. And I think they still would like the opinion of the designer review committee from Moke Hill.
So if we added language after painting and landscaping and the, the single-family dwellings, replacing the language on single-family dwellings, have the language, "Except as covered by an applicable design review standard," would that
I would think so. If that's the wording that would allow, if they're in the standards, then they need, then they can be applied. So it doesn't just exempt them forever. And any community that wants to include one of those could. But if we don't put that caveat, we're saying that they're not allowed to be in your designer review guidelines. And that would limit our communities.
Because I have some problems with the, the language that was in there for the single-family dwellings. We've got the, "Shall not apply," and then there's this exemption. It's kind of like a double negative in there.
Right.
So I think we could make that clearer.
I know. I would, I would kind of, the other inclination is just not to list exemptions kind of at all, just there, whatever they, people, communities want to put in their guidelines. Well, interior remodeling is never considered for a design review because design review is the view from the street. So that is an exemption.
There's also some constitutional issues regarding signs we have to be very careful about. And so, well, we cannot say what's on a sign. A committee can maybe suggest to someone that you want to make it look a certain way, but we cannot impose a standard on a sign.
The copy.
The copy.
It's the, you can't stop, you can't necessarily tell people they can't, they can't put certain words on there. It's about the design of the sign.
It's the free speech.
Right.
But it doesn't have to be 20 feet high and neon.
Right, I mean, there's, right.
That's the design.
It's like time, time, place, manner type of
Well, we have a sign ordinance in the county that specifies the size of the sign based on road frontage. So, and it addresses digital signs. And there's a sign ordinance in the county that they have to abide by anyway.
But just not what it says. And that's what this is, "Changes to copy on existing signs." So we really can't regulate that at all. So that would be another exemption that we would want to retain. I think the idea of having sort of a statement such as, you know, unless standards are included in the design guidelines for painting and landscaping would work.
Okay. Was there any other items that you had any issues with?
Well, yes, there were some questions. There's a map question, but is that on the next?
That's on the next one, yeah.
Okay, the next one. I, I do want to say that it isn't easy to find these guidelines on the county planning website. That there was a link, you know, in this, that if I typed in the entire, you know, address, I could come to it. But when you go to the planning department website, there's no resources section.
We can look at that.
Okay, okay. I think that's all, just the map thing. I'll come back on that.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for your input.
Can I have a question?
Yeah. Oh, absolutely. You can ask her a question.
Thank you. You talked about, or you used the word modification when you were reading from your design review document.
Uh huh.
Is it strictly limited to modifications? I know it's probably rare to have a new construction in Moke Hill.
Well, it could be additions.
Additions. It would apply to
It could be additions to a building. Actually, anything that you have to go to the planning department and get a permit for would trigger it. So small things, what, under 10 by 10 feet or something, 10 by 12. But porches, you would have to get a permit for, this is my structural engineer here coaching me.
Got it. Thank you.
Right. Did you have questions up here?
Not of, ask yourself.
Okay. So can, should we finish public comment, or did you, okay. All right. Is there any further public comment?
I painted my boat the other day, painted the deck. And you go down the, you go down the dock and you see a white boat, you see a white boat. Then you see a really white boat. Got the color wrong. I should have done eggshell white instead of just white. And so I'm taking it on myself to change that color, fit in with the other boats in the harbor. And yet, sometimes people will do that, to just take it upon themselves to meet the standards of the community. My concern with, with your, you know, I like plan development because I know what, I know what the rules are. I know that I might pay some extra money, but I can just go in there and do it. I don't have to, it's not a precarious situation where I'm dealing with people. And the whims, the political whims, the social, the social whims that they, that come with, you know, with people. You just recently had a situation in, where you did have planned a, a design review in West Point, in Dollar General. You guys did the design review. You were the committee. And then you put it on the people. And because they had no ideas, they just wanted to make trouble. The Dollar General store in West Point is, is the color palettes that I chose for it. You have, the awnings are the stucco on my house, the same color. The trim is the same color as my trim. And the, and the base of the, of the building is the same color as my, my metal buildings because I just gave them the palette to get the darn thing over with. The, when it comes to the design review process, what I'm concerned about are the people that are appointed to these committees. I have no faith in elected officials in this county. It rather resembles that movie Idiocracy and, in which the, the level of the, of the elected people is going further and further down until you have what you have now. And I'm not just pointing to Jack, I, all of them. Come on. You know, we get along fine. We get along fine. But, but I do, I am concerned that the rights of the individual will be trampled because, because there is a, the masses have their own idea of what is, what is best for somebody else. I think it works in places like McCallumey Hill, Carmel, Monterey. But I don't think you're, you're socially developed enough at this point to, to start telling people what to do. No, absolutely not. I was having a, I was having lunch with a friend. You probably all know who the, you all know who the person is, but I'm not going to say his name because I promised not to, not to quote him. And he says, he said to me, "How are the cuckoos of Wackerville?" referring to Calaveras County. I said, "Well, it's a little like Apocalypse Now. The further you go upstream, the weirder and more bizarre everything gets. So I'd like you to have a good day. And remember, don't cause me trouble. Don't take my time. I have things to do."
Is there any other public comment?
Colleen Platt, MyValleySprings.com.
Col.
I have things to do too, but I think this is important. I think you guys do a great job. So thank you very much for your time on this. I'm just a little confused on what requires a permit and what doesn't.
Me too.
As far as landscaping and painting and stuff. So maybe planning could clarify that for those of us who don't understand what we're getting into here. Thanks.
Thank you. Those are some of the questions that I'm going to have as well. Okay, is there any further? Okay. Good morning.
Good morning. My, my name is Al Rainey. I live Highway 49, 7928, Highway 49. It's parcel number 18-016-014. And my wife is fifth-generation Calaveras County. We moved to Moke Hill in 2011 primarily because we liked the look and the feel of the historic part of the, the, the area. Having kind of new to this process, looking back at the original McCallumey Hill plan back in 1988, it kind of included Main Street, part of Center Street. It was the downtown section. And it seems like over time, as it went from Phase One to Phase Two to Phase Three to, to the Board of Supervisors of Supervisors in 2013 and on to today, it looks like it's gotten mission creep. Okay, so...
Can I... Just because we have two different agenda items here, and the second one is about the mapping part.
Okay.
Are you speaking to that portion of the agenda, or are we speaking specifically on the countywide ordinance?
The Oak Hill, strictly Oak Hill.
Okay, then that...
That's up next on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I want to make sure when we get there, your input is taken in on that particular document.
At this point, yeah.
Yes, we're going to take up more of your time and have you sit with us till we get there. Thank you. Okay, is there any other public comment? Seeing that, I'm going to go ahead and close that, bring it back to the commissioners, and open it up for questions. And I know that you've been wanting to get a bite of this, so I'm going to let you go first.
If I understand this correctly, we now have a plan development combining zone situation.
Yes.
I'm assuming that what we have now specifies somehow what projects, what modifications, what additions and so forth are subject to the plan development process. Is that right?
Yes.
All right. Now, if you have... You're basically replacing that with a design standard review system, right?
Yes.
Okay. Wouldn't that... When the board approves design standards for a particular community, wouldn't those standards specify to what they apply, what projects they apply to? Painting, landscaping, remodeling, additions, wouldn't they do that?
They could, yes.
Well, if they didn't do that, how would you know that you had to apply for a Design Review permit?
Well, that would be a combination of the combining zone, the DR combining zone, and the provisions in this code that say it applies. And that brings up a point that I realized that under the applicability statement, I think we need to add something. And I have some proposed language that would clarify when a Design Review application is required.
Okay. Now, if that happens, then those standards and those requirements will specify to what projects this whole process will apply, correct?
Yes.
All right. If that's the case, why do you have to have any exemptions at all? It's all going to be taken care of when you come up with the design standards.
That's a good point.
Because otherwise, what you're saying is it doesn't apply to this unless this says it does. We'll just get rid of the exemptions and go with what the board approves for any particular community.
That's a very eloquent solution.
I think that's what Commissioner Bocelli was suggesting earlier, that...
No, he's right.
Do you need to say it?
He's right?
He's right.
Did you hear that?
Well, I thought about it. I don't know if I expressed it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I have one other suggestion on the ordinance. And this is just language under 17.52.010. It says the purpose of the Design Review combining zone is two, colon, then it has A, B, and C. On C, you should strike the initial phrase, the intent of this chapter is two. So it tracks with the rest of them. And that's all I have.
Karen?
Kelly said what I was thinking, the exemptions. I don't think they need to be in here. I really don't. Every community has its own things, and they will all be in review.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bocelli, did you have anything else to add?
Well, I'm still not entirely sure. All exemptions should be... I sense that Peter had to wrestle with this and to put it together, and I'm wrestling with it right now.
So those exemptions actually came out of what we already have in the Plan Development ordinance. But as Commissioner Booster pointed out, there are no standards that really apply to the Plan Development ordinance other than the fact that we utilize the design guidelines from McCallum Hill. There's nothing in the code that says we're supposed to, but we do that out of direction from the board, essentially. They've adopted these guidelines. They want us to use them. But there's nothing explicit in the code. So I think that we could certainly eliminate the painting, landscaping, and single-family home and just go to, you know, refer back to what is regulated under the adopted guidelines. I think that it would be helpful to just specify that interior remodeling is exempt and the copy of the signs because of the free speech issues associated with signage, just so it's really clear. It's probably not necessary because, again, the design guidelines would say this only applies to, or here are the things that we're regulating under the design standards or guidelines. Sometimes, you know, when we initially talked about this, the thought was that we could make the whole process ministerial. But the design guidelines really aren't that specific. So we could just, like a building permit, here is the code, here's what you have to do. There is a lot of judgment involved in reviewing the guidelines. And so we realized that we couldn't just say, "These adopted standards cover all of the issues associated with the development of a site."
And one of the benefits of putting in the exemptions for interior decorating and copy on existing signs provides a roadmap to any community that's going to be doing a design standard to realize that those are off...
Those are off limits as it is anyway. So I think that's appropriate. And I think that what I would like to do is, under the applicability statement, add another sentence because it doesn't really tell us when this process is triggered. It says it applies. And I would propose something along the lines of, "The Design Review process established pursuant to this chapter shall apply to any building permit on a parcel with the Design Review combining zone." So when someone comes in with a building permit, it's the first time we're going to see something like this. And so, okay, there's a building permit applied. And so then we pull out the standards. But if it's a building permit for interior remodel, you know, we don't have to worry about it. So I think that having that exemption there is probably helpful for the general public to know, hey, I just want to do a TI on an existing building. I don't have to go through a Design Review process.
Do we have to say... Right now, the Plan Development combining whatever his district applies to Oak Hill.
Yes.
Do we have anywhere where that is abolished?
That's the next item on the agenda.
It is in that one.
Yes.
Okay. I've got a question. Does this process, this new procedure, this Design Review combining zone, will that eliminate the $3,500 or whatever it is we're now charging for the PD?
We would be proposing a fee commensurate with time it would take. Right now, the biggest price, I mean, there still is time associated with it, but it would be a relatively... I'm working on a fee ordinance or a fee resolution update right now. And what I'd like to have is a nominal fee to cover our costs because it's taxpayers' dollars that are being spent to implement these guidelines, and someone has to pay for it. But it would be certainly less than $3,500.
Is it any different than just getting a building permit for a shed that's bigger than 10 by 12?
Yes. Yes, we have to circulate it to the committee. We get their review. We have to review the document ourselves. It takes, you know, some time for us to do it, a few hours. It's not a $3,000 cost.
It doesn't necessarily include a planning commission.
But it doesn't include a planning commission meeting. But it does include some staff time.
And it includes public input. Any other questions? So I personally do not approve of PD being changed because all it is is an initial change. We have PD. We go through the planning commission. We get told how we're going to live our lives. And then over here, we change the initials to DR. And there is nothing about this that changes except for it doesn't come before the planning commission. Nothing. And I have a real issue with overregulating in this county. I think that as a community and a community plan and the design review that's developed within the committee and the community with input is what should be the structure of that community. I don't think it should be every commercial property owner, business owner, coming in, having to pay fees to make an improvement to their business or their commercial building to this county. We should be able to go to the Building Department. If you are wanting to do something to your building and go apply for the permit, and just like you do with the Homeowners Association, you send a notice to the Architectural Review Committee for the HOA. You would send it to the Design Review Committee, and you would say, "This person is applying to do this at the county and build a garage. How do you feel? What do you... You need to give your input now." And then the Design Review Committee looks it over and reviews it and says, "These are our guidelines. Here you go. Please comply to the rules." I know there are people that are going to go outside the box. I get that. But I see nothing different from PD to DR except for we're changing the initials on the overlay of the property. That's it. I think the community should have the say-so. And here's the issue that I have. Peter, I love you. I think you are an amazing director, and I love the Planning Department. So don't misconstrue anything I'm going to say, and I'm making that clear to the public. Peter's not going to be here forever. Neither am I, and neither are any of these commissioners, and neither are any of you or your Design Review Committee. And it changes. And here's what happened at the town hall meeting in Arnold recently. So I'm speaking from a little bit of experience. In 1999, Plan Development was put onto the Arnold Community Plan because we wanted to start forming our town to look a little nicer, an Alpine look, and keep that mountain community feel. That's what we wanted, the same as you do. And so we had this big meeting. There was 98 people signed in that came. It was wonderful, a lot of feedback, a lot of arguments, and it was great. It was good debate. But people that were on the original committee in 1999 stood up, two of them, and said, "This is not what we thought we were getting when we asked for reviewing our community. We built our Arnold Community Plan, and we had little things and pieces in there that we said we wanted people to stick with." And then it went from that to plan development, large fees, six to nine months delay on projects, costs that were imposed on our business owners and commercial districts that were not affordable for a mom and pop to open their doors. And six to nine months, when you're transitioning your life and your business, is unreal and unacceptable. If you want to be mom and pop, you should be able to be mom and pop without having to go through that process. The 20 years that we have dealt with PD in Arnold alone destroyed our community. We became a ghost town. We're just now starting to lift our town back up again. It's not easy. But I do not see any difference between PD and DR except for we're not going to come before the planning commission. You're still going to pay a fee. You're still going to go through the Planning Department and a planner and a Design Review, and you're still going to have a long, drawn-out process. Not one thing changes except for you're not coming here. I think that our Planning Department is very competent. They understand when a community says this is what we want us to look like. When we're working on the Design Review Committee in Arnold right now, they wanted a three-tier process where structural would be this, and this would be this, and this would be this. There were three different tiers of Design Review that you would go through. And in that Design Review, they said this would be exempt, and it would just be an over-counter approval. I have tried explaining to people, there is no such thing as an over-counter approval. You're going to have a nexus study. You're going to have a fee applied. Anytime you are using staff and county time, there is a fee. So let's say Peter moves on, Julie's not here, none of us are here in five years. The next crew coming through looks at this, and they see it just like PD. Nothing changes. So I can't support this. That's just me. And I realize that this needs to happen for McCallum Hills project to happen, but I'm not in support of more overlays on projects. If the verbiage can be changed in here to make this specific to Oak Hill because that's what they're asking for, I'll support it. But if it's a countywide ordinance on people that haven't even made a decision to remove their PD or what direction they would go in, I'm not going to support it because I don't believe we've had the opportunity to say what we want to look like. But if we say we want Design Review in our community, the county ordinance just said what we got. We don't have any say-so again. We have been overruled by this ordinance. So that is my concerns. I also will defer back to 2015 when I attended, and I was my first year as a Planning Commissioner, and we went to the San Andreas Town Hall with all of the supervisors present and all of the commissioners. And we voted to continue updating our general plan update. At that same meeting, we voted to remove community plans. All of my district community plans were being removed. So if that happens, does the county say, "Well, since we took PD away from you and your community plan, now you're automatically Design Review? Does my community get a choice anymore? Is because this is now the county ordinance, is it shoved down my district's throat?" I don't know because now I'm going to interpret it of, "My county decided to remove PD, so now we're stuck with DR whether we want it or not." I don't know how this county moves forward and continues to interpret things. When I listen to the history of the people in my county say one thing, but they got another. And all it was, was a transition of planning directors, supervisors, and administration. I mean, I can tell you through asphalt. Colleen can tell you, we had language that could be misinterpreted and taken any direction you wanted to. So if I'm making a decision to do a countywide ordinance on this county, it will be black and white, so clear and so well-read that there's no misinterpretation. This ordinance has too many misinterpretations for me personally, and I'm done ranting.
I feel that it is black and white as to the applicability of this ordinance is restricted to areas where the Design Review standards have been adopted by the Board of Supervisors. So it's not forcing anybody to change from Plan Development. It's not forcing anybody to have Design Review standards. But if a community wants to have Design Review standards, and if those Design Review standards are deemed to be appropriate by the Board of Supervisors after a full public hearing where you can have other members of the community come in and say, "This isn't what I want. These people are misrepresenting me," et cetera, et cetera. If you go through the establishment of Design Review standards, and it's approved by the Board of Supervisors, then the next question is, "So what? What happens then? We have these standards. How are they enforced? Who's going to make the final decision?" And I think that the system that's being set up by this ordinance is quite clear that it's going to be... The planning director is going to seek the input from the Design Review Committee of the community involved with their already established Design Review standards, and then make the decision. Some decision has to be made. And this, and I think it's clear that it can't be a purely ministerial decision. So it has to be subject to review. But I would think that in most circumstances, you're going to have the planning director make the decision, and that the decision will become effective much faster than under the current procedures where it will necessarily go to the Planning Commission and perhaps on to the board. So I think this is a realistic way of dealing with communities such as Oak Hill that want to have Design Review standards.
You're right. It's only for Oak Hill.
Well, it will apply to anybody, any community.
That hasn't even had a voice.
That can put together Design Review standards that can be approved by the Board of Supervisors. of supervisors. That's the triggering thing. I mean, any locals can say, "This is what we want." But if they have a design review standard that has been approved by the board of supervisors after full hearing, why, then that should be enforceable in some way. This statute only applies to areas of the county for which design review standards have been adopted by the board of supervisors. And it's not usurping any other community's abilities to, to persuade people to do things a certain way or not, or it's not, it's not requiring people to give up on the plan development if they, if they like it.
But if we don't want plan development and we want to get rid of it, I have an email from the county that says, "We have to do CEQA on every lot and then we have to adopt this design review." How's that work?
I think that was misconstrued, because that was my email. What I'm saying is, and the other step in this process is that a zoning amendment needs to be done, a map amendment, which is the next thing on the agenda for McCallum Hill. So before this applies to any parcel, it has to have the design review combining zone applied to it, which is a legislative act by the board of supervisors. And so if a community wants to just simply, "We don't want to have design standards. We've got some parcels that are zone plan development today and we want to remove that." That is an action the board can take. There's a process we need to go through to do that. And it includes CEQA analysis. But it, it, that is up to the community and ultimately the board of supervisors of, do we want to impose standards on certain types of development in this community or not? And, and if the board says, or the community says, "We don't want it. We don't need it," and the board agrees, then we can get rid of it.
Okay.
It doesn't impose, in this, in the instance of, of McCallum Hill, we are simply swapping out or proposing to
Initials.
Plan development for design review. You're absolutely right. That's what I understand the community wants. You know, Arnold or other communities, that doesn't necessarily mean the same process is going to occur. That, that's a case-by-case basis of what does a community want? If Valley Springs wants to have design standards and they want to develop them, we can work with them to do so. And we can identify which parcels and which types of zones that those standards should apply to. And that would be part of adopting design standards for that community. If Arnold or Avery Hathaway Pines says, "You know, plan development is just a burden and we don't have a design criteria that we're looking for, for the development community. We don't want or need to have design standards. We don't have to do that. We just need to go through the process to remove the PD." And that's the part that we're working on right now. And we've got a meeting set up next week, I believe, to figure out what it is the community wants so we can move forward with that. So I hear what you're saying, Lisa.
Arnold is so different because we're on a major highway.
Yeah.
And when we have that PD overlay.
But I think we're getting sidetracked by what Arnold wants by, to what Tim has said, is that these, this is a template that could be used anywhere that we want to, but we don't have to. We're not imposing this anywhere except in the next agenda item in McCallum Hill. And it could be the only place it ever gets applied.
Okay.
But, but it's available to a community that may want to do something like this in the future.
Then I would want that language very clear in here because the staff support, the report specifically references Arnold, Avery Hathaway Pines, Murphys. It references scenic areas, which that would go right through my town. So it, and to me, it's implying, and because of conversations that have been had, that if we want to remove PD, we can't just simply do that. You can't just simply get rid of it. You've got to have something else. If you're telling me, "I can simply get rid of it and my community can have a design review in our community plan and my community plan does not have to adopt this design review ordinance if that's what the people so choose," then I want that language clarified.
Again, the community plan, the ordinance has the potential to apply anywhere in the county that we want to. This is a mechanism to apply standards that could be adopted by the board. Where there is existing plan development, this doesn't do anything to that right now until we look at that community and say, "Which parcels need to have plan development, if any? And if we want to have some type of design standards, we need to have a mechanism to apply those." If we, if, if you, you gave the analogy of CCNRs. Well, CCNRs are recorded documents that when a buyer buys a property, they say, "I agree to these. And, and I agree not to paint my house yellow." And the design review committee for the CCNRs, or whatever entity is there, can enforce those provisions. They're legally binding provisions. If we don't have something in the ordinance that says, "You shall abide by these design standards," there's no way for the county to enforce the design guidelines adopted by the board, other than it's purely voluntary. Now, if it wants to be, if you want to have a purely voluntary process, we can just stop this right now and
If it's, if it's a community, a plan that is adopted into the general plan, there's still an enforcement issue. If it was needed. It's telling people, "This is what this area desires in their community plan," but it doesn't mean we have to pull a permit and wait six to months, nine months. It's just, here's what we need to follow.
But again, if you have a statement that says, "We want it to look historic," well, that's all well and good. But if there's no mechanism to actually require it to be historic, someone come in and put up a metal tilt-up building that has no historic capability and there's nothing the county can do to stop it. And if that's the, if that's, if we want it to be purely voluntary, we can do that.
Eighty percent of the county is.
I, I think, can I just, I'm sorry to answer. I just, I don't, I want to see if I can clarify your question to, I'm not sure that you're hearing each other. I think that
She's not listening.
I think that
No, she's not. I was kidding, Peter.
I, I, is the question that you have, Lisa, they just thought by implementing this ordinance, would that somehow legislatively make it more difficult for Arnold if it chose to just get rid of design review without subbing anything else in? Is that the question?
That's part of the question, yes. Because it's referenced in here, and so in the staff report, not the resolution, Peter, so not, not to cause an issue there. It is, it is being referenced because we do have the PD in my district. So my concerns are, because of an email that I received, if I read it, which I'm not going to do, it said, "You can't just simply do this without doing this." And so that's what's triggering my fear.
So I think
They're so far ahead that I want to give them what they want. They've had years to build themselves and design what they want. Arnold is in the beginning stages and I feel like this would rip the rug out from underneath the bar of plan.
So I, I think that this, that Mr. Maurer is trying to say, and please interrupt if I'm, if I'm wrong.
Just show me one sentence that's so good.
Is, is that, I think that while I don't see myself how this would make it, would this, would, that this ordinance would actually change whether or not Arnold could get rid of PD without substituting something else, I think that the difficulty is that even if this ordinance wasn't even proposed, since Arnold already has planned development, there would be environmental review required to get rid of it.
Okay.
I think that, is that pretty much?
Yes, that's the issue.
That's the issue.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not because of the adding the ordinance. It's because even without the ordinance, getting rid of it would require environmental review. That's really the only
Right. And that was, that was the intent of my communication with you unrelated to this ordinance.
I think, I think the key thing is that this, this proposed ordinance provides communities with an option, but it does not require communities to take this option. And it does not require this option to be the only alternative to, yes, other actions the community might take. It just provides a framework for communities such as Moke Hill who have done the design review standard and have had them approved by the board. This is how, from here on out, it would be carried out. And, and so it's just, other communities, I, I think, I think we should preserve the ability of other communities to do what Moke Hill has done. But by this ordinance, I don't see where we're binding them in any respect to take any action.
Okay. And number two, under the evidence, I don't want towns specifically named, because then it includes them in this, whether they want to be included or not. And I don't like the way people change their interpretation. That's what bothers me.
That's a good concern.
I mean, because to me, I passed this ordinance and then two years from now, we finish whatever it is we're doing, and everyone goes, "No, no, no. See, you passed this ordinance and you signed it, Lisa, and your towns are listed on here." I don't want my town's name in there.
You can just eliminate that sentence.
That would make me happy. That'd make me very happy.
I think that's a good concern.
Until my area can decide what direction they want to go, I don't want anything that limits us.
Sure.
Sorry to drag you all through this, but after listening to the people at the town hall meeting say, "We got what we didn't ask for," I have concerns for my community.
This might be a theoretical issue, really. But the way this is written, the only body that makes a decision on whether a community will be sub to design review standards is the board of supervisors. And this ordinance doesn't require that there be a community plan that says, "Yeah, this is what we want." Or does it require that the community have any say in it? As a political matter, I would have to say that that would happen, I would think.
Yes.
But maybe we shouldn't say that it applies to areas of the county for which a community plan has specified and the board of supervisors has adopted design review standards. I don't know if that helps solve the chairperson's issues or not.
I think that just complicates things, myself. I mean, I think, I think
It may.
I think it's, not every community wants to go through the whole process of the community plan, and yet some communities might want to have a design review ordinance. You know, I mean, like
I don't recall the exact policy in the draft general plan, but I believe there are provisions in there that allow that to occur. So I don't know that we need to specifically reference a community plan. I think there are the opportunity through that in the general plan. I'm going to try to look it up for you right now, but see if I can find that.
Is it possible to have this put over and then actually take a look at that language? This whole process, I think, is much more important than
Certainly. It's really up to you. If you don't feel comfortable in passing it today.
I'm not, I'm not ready at this point to figure out what's the right way to go. I need a little more
I don't want to delay Moke Hill.
A little more research.
But it's a county ordinance. It's not specific to them. So it's, I mean, I, I just, they've been delayed for years and I don't want to cause any more delays for them. That wasn't my intent here. My intent is fix Moke Hill and give them what they need, but don't take the whole county with it.
It, it just seems inefficient to do it that way when it's clearly, it's the option of any other community to follow Moke Hill if they want to, but they don't have to. And I think if we can make that clear in the resolution, which I think, I think if we put it over for one meeting, we might be able to get language that would, would make your very valid concerns.
Well, it's also my community's concerns and I'm representing that community.
No, no, I understand.
And I appreciate what you just said.
I understand.
Thank you.
I think we have very good concerns and I think it can be solved.
I think it can be solved, too.
And I understand this isn't the board of supervisors' meeting, but I, I suspect we might want to have a little more publicity of this thing.
What leaves here and goes to the board of supervisors is important.
I understand that. I'm just saying.
We have nailed notice to almost every citizen of McCallum Hill, twice.
I'm, I have no, I have no issues with McCallum Hill because I know the community's on board. That is not my issue. So do, okay, I'm just going to poll you. Do you guys want to wait and roll this over for one meeting so that we can pull just a little bit more into it? Or do you want to address it today and keep moving forward?
Can, can we just put it over one meeting?
Certainly.
And you could come forward with, with the revisions to the, to the proposed statute that make it very clear that we're not taking away any options of other communities, which I understand is
Yes, I, if I can make those changes, it won't be in the packet that is being put together this afternoon.
Yeah.
But we can certainly send it out and post it as soon as it's available.
The other comment I've got is, I agree with Lisa's basic premise here, I think, is to reduce the burden on, on everyone who's doing a new construction or a remodel or whatever the project might be. And Mr. Maurer pointed out that he didn't think it would be appropriate to be ministerial. And as I think about this thing, and I'm still thinking about it, I'm not so sure it shouldn't be ministerial. If there is a community group that's reviewed all the design review aspects, why, why should there be that much staff time at, at planning department level? Why couldn't it be either ministerial or darn closely?
We would need to modify the design guidelines to become very specific standards in order for the process to become ministerial. It's like someone could look at it and say, "This is what I'm required to do. There's no judgment involved in that." And I know that the, there's a great deal of time that we went into the development of these guidelines, but looking at that, I would not be able to say, "This proposal complies with this." I, I don't, it, it's not to that level of specificity that allows it to be a truly ministerial type of process.
And I don't think it could possibly be without being a 2,000-page document. I think, I think you've hit upon it, though, is that the design review committee will have looked at it by the time it gets to the planning director. And presumably, the great weight will be given to the design review committee.
So why is there going to be another six to nine months delay?
I don't see where there would be.
Haven't heard planning saying otherwise.
No, I think I said just the opposite. It would significantly shorten the timeframe. You know, we would not have to schedule for the planning commission. We could, where, I mean, typically what happens is we work it out between the applicant, the county staff, and design review committee. Okay? Then we have to prepare the report and do all this. Now, there could be a situation where there is a large piece of property that is currently undeveloped that is proposing a fairly significant commercial development. You know, that's going to be a more lengthy process because it's going to be subject to CEQA. We have to look at, you know, the same things we do today under PD that we would design, you know, under design review, because, you know, we have to still look at archaeological resources and biological resources, those kind of things, on a greenfield site. But whereas already developed, you know, the, the church property that was referenced earlier, the past several designing, or PD applications in McCallum Hill that has come before you, where there was a, you know, I think it was a secondary unit behind an existing house, or an addition to, to a house, or the modification to the old fire station. Those are things that can be handled very simply, you know, working with the applicant and staff and get that resolved.
Without much time, staff time involved, right?
Without a great deal of time, no.
Probably. I mean, depending on the case.
Yeah, it's going to depend on, on the individual case and, and, you know, what they're proposing and how, you know, the design review committee responds to the proposal. But for the most part, I would say 90%, 95% of the applications that we receive are going to be very routine and go through very simply. And they'll be exempt from CEQA because of just the nature of the, of the project.
You had suggested adding language that this chapter would apply to any situation where a building permit was required?
Yes.
Okay, so somebody comes in for a building permit and suppose the, some area of the county, some community has adopted design review standards, and those design review standards say, "This only covers X, Y, and Z and nothing else." And you would look at that and say, "Okay, even though this ordinance says it applies, the design standard says not to worry. I don't have to do anything." Is that how it would work?
Yes, I believe so. I, I'm trying to think of the mechanics of that, but I, I don't see why, you know, that, that's the obvious process. If, if the design standards say, "We're exempting these types of things," or "We're only applying to these things," and someone proposes a building permit that is not a part of that, we'd say, "Doesn't apply here. We'd issue the building permit."
I think, yeah, and I think that it could be clarified in the, in the ordinance that it only matters covered by the design review standards and it only matters covered by the design review standards, and requiring a building permit
I would just ask, I would ask that we review the evidence on number two because of the way that it's worded, and it lists all of the communities, and then it says, "This ordinance will facilitate implementation of design standards, blah, blah, blah. The maximum degree of control over local zoning matters. The maximum degree of control." That bothers me. Sorry.
That is actually language, right, from state law, and it's not, not saying that we are trying to create the maximum amount of control. It says that the state government has given the maximum amount of control over local issues to the counties.
And you are not that person, but I don't know who my next director will be.
I will, I will look at that and refine that, so it's, what I'm trying to say is...
It makes my head explode.
This ordinance is consistent with state law because they have given us the maximum amount of control over local ordinances and local zoning.
What were they thinking?
Well, would you rather than have the, have the minimum amount?
No, I'd like you in control. Thank you.
But if that's, if that's concerning, we can clarify that for you.
Why don't you just eliminate the sentence?
Because it's part...
That would be the next sentence.
It's part of county, it's part of state code that he's referencing, so I see the importance.
I understand that, but the next sentence, cover it.
All right, so I think we've got a plan going forward. We're gonna look at a couple of things, and yes.
And I don't want to put this on for as long as possible, but I don't think bringing it to the next meeting's gonna help us. We're not gonna have anything arriving. Correct? We're not gonna get any packing?
No, no, we can, I'll get you something early next week.
Okay.
Yeah. It's just, I won't have it in the packet that we're gonna be assembling today and, you know, sending out to you immediately. I mean, maybe I can, but we've got some other stuff we're trying to wrap up.
How about something completely non-controversial?
Okay.
When, when you're redrafting the resolution, that last sentence under number two evidence, the proposed ordinance has been reviewed by County Council. It doesn't say that the County Council has concluded anything, so you would say, "After review, County Council has concluded that the proposed ordinance is consistent with other provisions of the code."
I, I don't know that that even needs to be in there.
Well, that's fine, but if it is in there, don't have anybody saying, "So what?"
Okay, so I'm gonna try and bring us back in a little bit, and we are going to table this until a definite date of the next meeting, which is October...
Eleven.
Eleventh. So can we table this to the October date? Is everybody in agreement?
We didn't ask Moke Hill. Is that any problem?
I'm sorry. I truly am, but...
A two-week delay over five years.
This is a big decision for our county, and we have to make sure we have it perfect. I'm sorry. I, I will stand out in the hall, and you can get your sticks. Oh, torches. Thanks, Jerry. Okay, so can I poll the commissioners, or can we vote to take that action to move it to the October 11th meeting?
I would so move it.
Thank you. Second is Commissioner Sisk. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay. Okay, so we have a four-one, and I still have an agenda in front of me, don't I?
I think probably we ought to at least discuss number five, in case there are similar problems that need to be...
Well, I don't think that we can take action on, I mean, we could take action on number five today if you think it's appropriate, but since we don't actually have the ordinance that would apply to it, it doesn't really make sense to take final action.
I, I understand.
I think that since we have people here, let's go through the presentation and...
I would like to go through the presentation and have public comment on this so that when we come back in two weeks, we're prepared for that.
If there are changes of an app we need to make, we can make that.
Yes, yes.
So I'm gonna move down there so I can turn on the computer going.
I'm sorry. You gotta teach me on McCallum Hill, but I gotta get that right. Did I? I just don't wanna insult anybody. Yes. Oh, I could do that. Okay, so next item on the agenda is item number five, 2018-044. Peter is gonna give us a presentation on that. So there you go, Peter. It's all yours.
All right, so this is a zoning map amendment. It would be, its intent is to implement the future designer view ordinance for McCallum Hill. I think at this point in time, we'll go through the presentation, but I would recommend that we don't take any action on it until we decide whether or not to recommend adoption of the ordinance. This map up here represents all of the parcels identified in orange and red are the parcels in McCallum Hill that have the PD combining zone applied to them. The proposal would be to change each of those to designer view. With the exception of the two in red, we're proposing to remove them entirely. They are two residentially zoned parcels. One already has a house on it, and it just didn't seem necessary to have, they're, they're not really within the historic area of the community, and there's not gonna be, you know, much development that would affect the historic character of the community on those two parcels. The parcels in blue were recommended to be added. Those are parcels that were included in the historic, historic center designation of the draft general plan when we went through the, um, the general plan, land use map. I'm gonna try to zoom in on that a little bit here if I can get this tool working up. So those, they're primarily the homes that have been identified, or the parcel that are identified as being historic. They're on the list of historic parcels that were included in the, um, the guidelines, as well as, as I said previously, in the, um, in the draft, in the draft general plan land use map. So those would be new parcels in which the designer view criteria would, would apply.
So, Peter, the two out, you're asking the same question, okay? The two that are outside of town are blue because?
Those were ones that the property owner requested that they be included in the historic design, or the historic overlay for, or the historic center, historic center, I'm trying to remember what we call it, historic center land use designation. At the time, I had advocated that they not be because they weren't contiguous.
Right.
But the property owner requested that he be included in those, and so it would make sense that that's part of the historic designation from the general plan, that they also have the design standards applied to them.
Same person owns both properties?
I think they're two separate owners.
And, and have they indicated that they want to be included in the design review process?
I have not spoken with them directly, but we have sent out a mailing, both with the initial study when, when the drafting of the declaration was proposed, as well as a notice of this, this hearing today.
And it was clear from that that these would be...
This map was included, so they would have identified that, so...
And I'm sure the public will address those when we get there.
Yes. So this is the proposal. The only clarification I would like to make is at the south end of town on Highway 49, there's a large parcel. It's only a small portion of that that's actually would have the designer view combining zone. I didn't have the ability with our GIS to, um, that. This front part, from about this point where the cursor is, down to here, is owned commercial.
I remember that when we did the general plan update.
And so that, that would be the only portion. And on, in the, um, the resolution, there is an attachment that lists all of the parcels, and it says, so this would be exhibit one after the resolution, 1801106 portion. I would clarify that that portion of the parcel is owned commercial. So it's very clear that we're just zoning that portion of it, because otherwise, "portion" doesn't really mean anything, what portion of it. So I would propose that we amend that to, um, to clarify that's...
So that was on the exhibit but not on this map, and that was just a...
It just was, when I first had our GIS team prepare this map, they didn't have the ability to split it just because of the characteristics of, without going in and creating a whole new layer.
And again, is that owner aware of this?
Yes, I talked, I spoke with him last week or two weeks ago at the front counter. He was, would like that. So it's really pretty self-explanatory. I think the biggest issue is there are individuals that, you know, don't necessarily want to have anything on their property, and I don't know if there's anyone here that is on one of those blue parcels that say, "Well, wait a second. This is all new to me. I don't like it," so I'll turn that over to the, let the public weigh in on this.
Okay. Okay, does anybody have any questions of Peter, or would you like to hear from the public?
Do you have a one quick question?
Okay.
In your analysis, it says, "Any new development or exterior change in existing structure requires a planning commission hearing." Are you talking about the current arrangement or this design review process, or for what?
That's a good question.
All right, first page, analysis, about the sixth line down, fifth and sixth, any new development?
That's the current process under the plan development.
The "currently" from the earlier sentence is supposed to be carried over there.
Okay. Go to public. Okay. Would the public like to come up and address some of these mapping issues?
Julia Castello again, McCallum Hill. And I just have a little, I think it was just an inadvertent error. There's a little lot that is not zoned yellow, but has been part of the historic district since the 1983 community plan, and the maps have gone through... Peter and I talked about it. Do you want it pointed out, or do you want me to?
Yeah, it's, it's this parcel...
Right there.
Right there.
Oops, where are we? Oh, there.
And it's, it's actually, it's split by this road, or drives, it goes through there. I don't know if that actually exists on, the road actually exists on...
It is. It's Garden Lane.
But, and under the, um, the existing zoning does not show it. It was identified in the, is it the design guidelines or the...
Well, in the designer view guidelines that were passed by the Board of Supervisors, it's included in, within the historic district.
Ah.
So that could be one that we could add as well.
Well, if the supervisors passed it, shouldn't it be included?
Yeah, and I don't know why it's not on it.
Okay.
Our zoning records don't show it as being zoned out. So it, it...
And, and...
Could it just have been an error because it was only a portion of that parcel that was included in the historic design guidelines, and somehow that mixed when it was applied?
And, and we have reviewed this with Peter over and over again, so it just slipped through, and Vaughn McLaughlin said I could blame her and Terry Weatherby. I think it was just, it just slipped through.
Does the owner know that this is...
Yes. That's Chuck Allard. He's a grieved descendant, and he's been supportive of the whole thing and assumed it was included.
Great.
Well, yeah, if, if he can officially make that known to the Planning Department somehow,
Well, if the Board of Supervisors have already approved it, I don't think it's any question anymore.
Right. It's just an editorial...
And it might be just an, an error that needs to be corrected on our zoning maps.
Easy. That's your issue.
Okay.
That's all I have.
That's all you have?
Yep.
Okay, now...
Well, I guess I did have one question. She just said a portion, one of you just said a portion of the parcel. And Peter, you said you were, I thought, referring to the whole parcel on both sides of...
Well, the parcel is on both sides of, um, the red or Garden Lane, but the portion that was included in the original action was just that on the south side.
Okay. Okay, great.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next public comment?
Welcome back.
Thank you for hanging in there with us.
Al Rainey, 7928 Highway 49, Moke Hill. Parcel number, number 18016014. So we, we live on the south side, and I guess that's considered the southern gateway to this historical community. So it looks like the, the plan over time has evolved from the original townsite, and now it's starting to creep down into the county, south of Moke Hill, okay, which includes our property. We have three acres, a small farm with fruit trees and all the trees. The problem, or the concern we have, is if you're a tourist and you're heading north on Highway 49, you come into Moke Hill, about the time you see the Moke Hill sign, the hotel leisure sign, that becomes the, the design review criteria. Okay, so then you, but as soon as you pass Main Street and start heading out of town, it stops. So if you're coming south on Highway 49 from the county, you, you go through the River Canyon, you crest the hill, you, you come out on Moke Hill, Moke Hill Valley, as it's called. You've got the mining cart up on the right, welcome to Calaveras County. You start, you don't have any requirements at all, design review, PD, or anything. As you come into Moke Hill, you pass Wendell's on the left. They have it. Nobody else has it, from the county line all the way in through Moke Hill until you get to Main Street. And now all of a sudden, Main Street into town and going south is required. So our concern is you either include both, both gateways, north and south, coming into the community, or you eliminate the southern part and just have the townsite. Okay? However, I want to clarify that if this would jeopardize removing PD status from our property, then, in other words, so what my wife, she's sick. She couldn't be here today, but she said, "Can we eliminate the PD, the plan..."
Plan development.
Yeah, and not have the DR because the people all on the north side, northwest side, don't have anything. So that, that's our concern.
Where's your lot in this map?
It's right, I see where the cursor is, right there.
Yeah.
That's a triangular-shaped parcel.
And so this has already been adopted by the Board of Supervisors?
Well, this was, these parcels are all the ones that have the PD overlay on it today.
Okay.
And that was adopted by the board some time ago, and they were included in the design guidelines as a way to look at the entryway. And we have Wendell's, a one additional parcel over on the, you know, this side of town, and then all the parcels here at the intersection of 12 and 26, as well as going down Highway 49.
Well, could you point out which, which is 12, which is 26?
This is, here's Highway 26.
And 49?
Little arrow doesn't really work around. And then 49 is this here.
So Highway 26, 49 going south, everything is covered. Highway 49 going west and north, as soon as you pass Main Street, nothing, until you pass Wendell's, and then nothing until you get, I mean, it's, it's it. You have one, like, one parcel past Main Street that's covered. So we're, we're just asking for fairness. I mean, if, if this requirement is gonna be on the southern part, southern gateway, then why not the northern gateway? That's all. That's all.
So the reason that I believe that these parcels were identified is they are all the ones with commercial zoning, except for the historic core of residential homes. So at the north gateway, only those two parcels are zoned commercial today, while at the south gateway, there's a number of parcels that are, that have a commercial zoning.
And, and they were designated as part of this because of the effect that development, commercial development could have on the historic nature of the town, is that?
I was not here when that happened, but I believe so, yes.
So the zoning on that particular parcel is commercial?
Yes.
C two PD at this point in time.
Hmm, so we could build Walmart there. I could see why they want to include that and, don't worry about that. I could, that would be their reasoning in their design review because you have the ultimate commercial zoning and going in and out. That encompasses what they would consider still their historical coming into town look. When we worked on, I'm trying to think, and you guys have reviewed that, correct? And you've met with him?
Yeah. My, my, you and Sandy.
Okay. Thank you very much.
If you have anything more to say, you'll have a chance.
Do you, my wife, why don't we drop off a letter just with her concerns?
Absolutely. Thank you.
I'm, I'm Terry Weatherby again. And Lisa, I'm right with you. If we could get rid of all the PDs today, I would vote yes. Let's get rid of all the PDs today.
Let's do it.
Right, you guys? You with me? Who's with me? No, we live in a compromised society and we compromise with everybody else.
Absolutely.
In Moke Hill, our compromise was the design review guidelines. That's why we're here, that's why we got to where we are. And I can tell, I, I can ditto Peter on, on, that's Wendell's, a commercial. When we were doing the general plan, we talked about bringing all of the surrounding properties in, Sandy. And the surrounding properties, they didn't want to come in. They're, they're zoned ag and residential and they're not, they're not ready for that level of development yet. So, so that's why they're not PD, that's why, you know, that's why they are where they are. So the, I can comment on a couple of the properties in town, Peter, if you can pan over a little bit, the two blue ones. Those have applied through the general plan. The lower right one, Chris Nieber's property, he, he wanted to be commercial. He's got some long-term plans that I, I don't really want to say right now. So that's why the PD was put on that, so that he could move down that way. And then same thing across the way, James Aaron's, he's an artist and same thing, he has a shop there and he wants to have a little, he has a little building out in front that someday he has stuff at the Washington, what is it, National Art Review or something? He has stuff exhibiting there right now. So anyways, so that's, those are, those are all being incorporated in. The PD, as I said, it, and I didn't finish my story, Joseph. I, when we went through the PD process, Peter, Peter was super great to work with. Thirty-five hundred dollars was the initial thing and on the church, I think it worked out to about fifteen hundred dollars through the whole process, like you said, the environmental documents. I think, and, and Peter doesn't want to say, I, I think we're probably looking somewhere around five hundred to a thousand dollars for the design review. And to me, that's, that's the way to go. We want to go that way. We want to make it easier to do stuff in Moke Hill. And, and, and really, you guys also, it's a function of, we don't want to build stuff without a permit. And that's what a lot of people do because all of the cost, thirty-five hundred dollars, why bother for a shed out in front, you know? It doesn't make sense. But anyways, anyway, that's what I wanted to say, thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Is there more public comment?
Hi.
Hello. I'm Cindy Thine-Peterson and I'm in the yellow and I don't know why. So I came to find out the point of all this. When we built our house in two thousand and five, we, I'm assuming we were in the plan development area. We did not have to go to any meetings and didn't have to stand in front of you to build our house. We're out there on a one-lane road that is a dead end that only residents use. So is there a reason that we're on it?
Is she commercial?
Which one is yours?
No. And the, the triangle at the very top.
Part of that?
Yeah, the, next to it.
That one?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's me.
Is that county maintained out there, the road?
Dirt road.
It's a county road.
I can answer a little bit, Cindy. I don't know why your lot and Miller's lot right below are, are zoned with PDs, but the lot to the right is zoned multifamily.
I'm multifamily too.
All right, then that's why you're PD, because it's multifamily.
Okay, so I don't, okay.
Did you build a single family home?
Uh huh.
So you didn't do like condos or apartments and that would be the fear with that multifamily?
It's totally by, yeah, it's totally by.
But as a multifamily, I don't want a design committee to say I can't do it because they, it doesn't, I mean, I don't plan on tearing down my house and putting in multi, but I am, that is my zoning and I, I don't want anyone to come on my property saying that I can't do it even though I'm zoned that way. You know what I mean?
Yeah. Peter, is she in PD?
Right now, she's in PD.
Okay.
So it's a R three PD, I believe, is the zoning.
Yeah, I believe you're right.
And the, the PD exempts single family homes under the current code and that's why there wasn't a PD done for her home. But if she were to apply for a multifamily project, then it's not that she can't do it, what the, either designer view or the PD says is you need to meet these standards to do it. So the standards are what's in the design guidelines as far as trying to make it look somewhat historic.
So by us adopting this design review for Moke Hill, it's a benefit to you because PD does get removed. You still have design review, but it's going to be a lot simpler process for your property. And I think when we went and worked on the general plan update, we reviewed all of these lots in there and discussed each one.
Yeah.
You were here. Okay, so I think that is going to be something that you're going to have to speak with Peter about because technically at this point, it's going to roll with what I see the PD rolling into DR unless you apply for an amendment for a zone change on that. That's, am I wrong?
Well, we have a, we have at least two parcels here that are being removed from PD, period.
Yeah.
And not added to the design review. And the question is, should this be given the same treatment? But I'm not sure where it is.
The difference between those two, those who are zoned are one.
No.
That's the difference and they're exempt and hers is R three, so she has the ability to do.
Yes, I understand it. You, no matter what's done with the design review, you will still have the option of having a multifamily dwelling on your property. It's just whether the design standards, right now, it's a question of which, how would the design standards apply through the PD process or the design review process? So it's not taking away any rights that your zoning gives you.
But as a single dwelling, I didn't have to go through the planning department.
No, because?
But now I'll have to go through them.
If, if, if you do it.
And I don't, I don't think that's fair. I mean, I, so I just need to go in and, and ask to be removed because.
Yeah.
More than that.
Yeah. Just ask to leave it in PD.
Just the title.
Okay. Not that I'm tearing down my house and building a multi.
Thank you. Okay, any further public comment? Okay, seeing none, oh, come on. You get your five minutes here.
You've sat here all this time.
We give you five whole minutes here.
Ray Waller again. I haven't gone through the PD a couple of times, one in Moke Hill. I support this. I just want to make sure, make a comment that these are guidelines and standards and recommendations to staff and that staff has the ultimate authority whether or not to enforce them or not. This gentleman over here mentioned it, Mission Creek. And we don't want to be able to have a dictatorial process on how people, when people buy these houses, most of these older houses, they buy them because they like that style and they want to keep that look. I don't think they're going to go in there and make these modern mansions or anything. So, and the property owner knows what's best for his property. They're the ones that are economically financing these things. And some of these things are really money pits. So at some point, you got to say, I got to stop working on this house because I'm running out of money. So I just want to reiterate that this all has to be a voluntary process to go through this and planning to make the decision at the end. Thank you.
Thank you. You have anything further?
Well, the only concern I have about his last statement was it a voluntary process. It's not voluntary.
Right.
It's mandatory. But it's, they're guidelines and it's a cooperative process between staff, the committee.
[laughing]
What I meant by voluntary is that if there's a dispute between a property owner and staff as far as colors or the look of a certain particular architectural aspect, there may be other overriding features that may dictate that you think outside the box, the new codes that, that may have to come into effect. So I'm just saying that there's got to be some give and take on both sides of the aisle.
Okay.
I mean, we would, we would refer to the adopted guidelines.
Right.
That's, would be, and in some cases, the guidelines, you know, have some flexibility. And so that's, you know, where we try to apply this is, you know, how best do we apply these design guidelines?
Didn't you speak already?
I, I did, but something came up.
So do you want permission to speak again?
Can I, can I speak again? I was going to talk about the designer view committee.
Absolutely.
There's been a lot of confusion from you guys on the designer view committee. I want to remind you, it is not a supervisor sanctioned group. It's a group of five or seven or eight of us that are volunteers through the Moke Hill Trust. We have nothing that we say affects anything, okay? It all goes through the staff. The staff looks at our design review guidelines and they apply it. If they have questions, we have a volunteer group that they can ask the questions to. But there's nothing mandatory in what we do because we're not sanctioned. So I, I know you said, said something earlier, Kelly, and I just want to make sure you guys understand that. There is no official designer view guidelines passed, or design review committee passed by the supervisors. We have no authority.
So are you going to be seeking sanctioning? Your committee?
The committee's split on that.
Okay, okay.
Personally, I, I kind of like the way it is now. If we have a committee, then it'll have to be elected or appointed by the board and it, it could get interesting. Julia can comment from the other side, but like every community in the whole country, we're split a little bit on some of these issues. As I said earlier, Lisa, it'd be good if PD could go away, but it's not going to go away. It's a compromise.
Okay, thank you.
You did good.
All right, well, you got, well, you got hand claps from her. Okay, so I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to the commissioners. Peter, do you have anything further you want to say?
No, I think that the best course of action at this point would be to continue this concurrently with the, the prior item. We'll bring back a cleaned up map that shows the change to the parcel on Garden Lane, I think Garden Lane. And showing the extent of the zoning for Mr. Seiler's property at the south end of town where it's just a portion of the property, unless there are any other recommend, recommended changes.
You don't get away that easily, Mr. Maher. I've got a major change here.
Ooh.
On, on your resolution.
But we haven't approved of his major change yet, so he's just making a recommendation.
I'm making a recommendation. General plan finding number two, the evidence under, under the goal, you just have to add a D to the end of enhance. Yeah, I mean.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, you must be embarrassed by this.
Oh, Tim.
Okay.
You can find it where?
Which, there's?
Page two, under general plan finding number two, evidence, goal.
Okay.
I just want to, so when you come back with a revised resolution, I don't say, ah, but we didn't do this.
It'll be a test to see if I did it or not. Catch me.
Okay, so I would like to get a motion to table this to come back to October eleventh.
Make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that is done for today. And then there are no action items, there are no informational items, there's no study session. Do any of the commissioners have anything they would like to report out on?
No.
Okay, that was quick. Peter, do you have anything you'd like to report out on?
No.
Meeting is adjourned. It is lunchtime.
Right.